Welcome to this week's episode of Bringing On. My name is Bob Hayes and I'm going to be your show host today. As we've been doing, as you'll see if you follow Whitman-Hanson Community Access, we've been trying to interview candidates that are running for selectmen and other boards this year because it seems like it's pretty active. It's good to have active members coming forward for these totally unpaid volunteer positions. And with me today is former police chief Scott Benton. Scott, how are you?
Good, how are you Bob?
Good. Can you give the viewers a little history of Scott and you were Whitman-Hansonite, your family?
Yeah, sure. I grew up in Whitman, I've lived in Whitman for over 50 years. Graduated from Whitman-Hanson in 82. My wife graduated in 83. My brother and sister Whitman-Hanson graduates. Our kids all graduated. Our youngest is a sophomore now at the high school. I worked for the town for over 33 years for the police department, ending as the chief. Retired in 2019. And now I'm looking to get involved, you know, in a different way. Certainly from a different perspective. But I think that, you know, I've been around for a long time, part of a budget process for about 11 years and worked with a lot of departments in the town. So I just decided, you know, I figured I'd throw my hat in the ring and see what happens.
Well, what do you see as some of the biggest challenges Scott? We're jumping, I know we're jumping right in here with both feet, but your experience shows that you're ready for this type of job, I would think. What do you see some of the biggest challenges? I know that, can you walk through, you were the chief during COVID and that was probably one of the most curveball difficult times in the history of the United States. Can you give us a little background on how you handled some of that?
So I actually got out just before COVID.
Okay.
So I was, I was fortunate that way.
Thank God, right?
Yeah, right. So I lucked out that way. But as far as, you know, being involved and I think the town, I think that the town faces, there's a lot of choices that are going to need to be made and some tough decisions. You know, we always sat in a room by the department heads, usually the superintendent from the schools would also come. And, you know, you had to sit in a room and you had to figure it out. And I think that's really kind of what needs to be done. I think the openness, I know transparency gets sometimes overused, but I think it's just everybody needs to sit in the room and figure out how we all make it work. And that's what we used to do. And I, and I think that can't be overrated. It gets you in a room and you're working together and you go back and forth, well, what do you need, what do we need? Because you can have the nicest guy in the world, but if it doesn't have all the nuts and bolts and fuel and everything that it needs, it isn't going anywhere. So you can't, I think when you try to prioritize one department over another, that's when the conflict comes in and you pit against each other and that becomes really difficult. Because as people, alls we can ask to do is be treated fair. None of them treat me better, don't treat me worse, just treat me fair.
So you're a strong advocate for collaboration, would you call it?
Absolutely. I think that's, you have to.
I know that it's funny because the years that I served, the transparency piece always comes up and that's a very, very easy word to throw out there and it has a lot of different definitions, but collaboration, as you know, we have all sat and done that. So you think strong collaboration. I know the town faces, as all towns do coming off of COVID, projects that were put off, funding that wasn't coming forward because so much, so many things were on hold. We had a couple of year kind of a hiccup in the country. How do you catch up?
Well, I think you have to sit down and you do have to look at what is necessary right away and you have to rank them in an order. And, you know, at the end of the day, some people are going to be happy with the order and some people aren't, but I think that's when the citizens come forward and they speak and, you know, through town meeting or through the people that are elected and say, hey, this is what's important to us. You know, the police department, we were in the basement of the town hall and we had six cells at one point and four were condemned. We were getting to the point where we were going to be in a trailer across the street over in the ball field. And it took us like 50 years to finally get a new police station. I know the DPW is in a critical time right now with their, with, where their operations run out of in, in the facility down there. It's, it gets to the point where it even becomes dangerous. So, you know, and I know the schools are talking about, they, you know, they're looking at the Whitman Middle School now and they're looking at, do we add on? How do we do this? So, you know, there's, and there's a lot of, there's just a lot of needs, you know, the seniors are looking at, hey, are we outgrowing the senior center that we have and do we need to look at something different? So there's so many things that go on, but again, the, really the basics of it is there needs to be a dialogue, there's need, and there needs to be the people in the room that are going to make the decision or be able to advocate for what they need. So.
Well, there's needs and there's wants and that always seems to come up whether they're five years old or 50 years old. It always seems to be something.
You're right.
You talk about, we talk about collaboration and we talk about needs and we talk about wants. How do we get there? No one wants new taxes, but services are something that people are demanding today more than ever.
Yeah.
How do we get there without raising taxes? And this doesn't, it kind of puts you on the spot, but I've done it with all the candidates.
Yeah. So I, well, I think, you know, nobody wants to raise taxes. I think from FY '21 to FY '22, it went down almost a dollar, the tax rate per thousand. It's close to, it does like 96 cents, I think, which is $14 and like 90 something cents from 15, whatever it was, which is pretty low.
Yes.
I mean, the expectation has to be at the end of the day, it's just like, I know it doesn't compare numbers wise, but it's just like your home budget. If something increases, like gas or something, or I want, or I'm going on more trips and it's up, then something has to change. You either have to decide, you know what, I've got to get some more money or I have to put more money to that, so how do I, how do I do this? And yeah, taxes certainly are one of them. I think you have to look at revenues coming into the town. I know, you know, different things get, you know, thrown about as far as trying to bring revenues into the town and stuff. I think that you look at the, you know, you'll hear people, and I applaud anybody who's trying, because let's face it, that's half, that's more than half the battle. At least you're trying, you're looking for ways. We don't have the makeup for business to do a split tax thing, in my opinion. You know, when you look at the SIP on that, whether it's commercial, industrial and property, we do one, you know, tax for everybody. Because otherwise you're going to drive business out. The, the communities that do that split, Avon's like 70% business, we're 11. It, you're going to drive, the businesses that are here, you're going to, you're going to put them under. So, you know, that's, you know, to me, that's not, that's just not a viable, I mean, yeah, you look at it, but to me, it's just not a viable thing. I know that they're talking about this, the marijuana thing, which I understand is controversial. And when I was the police chief, I certainly was not for, was, this was probably going back now, five years ago maybe. And it was new, nobody knew and I'm like, you know what, I just don't want to deal with it. Well, now you look, and I'm not for a hookah bar or any of that other stuff in the center of town where people are going into, but as far as, you know, the selling or whatever, like if you look at the medical aspect of it or even obviously recreational, all these other communities are making a lot of money. I'm not saying we have to do it, but if you're going to look at everything, you do have to look at it and you have to look at it with an open mind. If you continually want to give and spend money and we need to go over there, well, as you just said, where's the money? Like where is it coming from? You better figure this out. So you're either going to go up in your, in your taxes a whole bunch, or you're going to just try to put things together that you can gain some revenues and, you know, and bring, bring something into the town. It's real money. And you can go to Abington, you can drive to the east side of Brockton to do that. So I guess the question for Whitman and the residents would be, do you want people, because they're not, they're not smoking it there, they're not doing it there, they're going in and buying it and going home, whether it's recreational, whatever they're doing. So it's like having a supermarket. People stop at Stop &amp; Shop, do you not want them here? Do you not want, you know, it's, you have to look at it and I understand it's controversial and certainly I can appreciate that and I respect people's opinions on it, but at the end of the day, if it's 200 or 300 or $400,000, that's a lot of money. So.
It's a huge amount of money and a huge amount of revenue source. And I kind of sat with you, I did a mediation in Hanson because they were going to have a growth facility. So I was the moderator and I knew nothing about what they were talking about. I thought marijuana grew in the dirt until I found out about hydroponics and, and on and on and on. And I think that a lot of people have that misconception. So that revenue is definitely a source. Housing, the shortages of housing and people complain and talk about housings and condos and you talk about the SIP and most people don't even know what we're talking about when you talk about that. That is a revenue generator and a lot of people think it's a cost generated. You have an opinion on that one way or the other?
Yeah, so I did, I did speak to Kathy Keefe, because I was curious too as to, you know, you hear the same thing, the condos, the housing. It was like 96 new condos, but that's what helped drop that tax rate, almost a dollar, was people are paying taxes. You're, you're getting taxes on this, on this property. So again, that's revenue. You know, you can't, you know, you can't have it both ways. You can't, you can't say I want money, but then I don't want houses or I don't want condos. It's like, you can't, you can't have it both ways. It's, you know, if you want the money and it's a viable thing and it, proof's in the pudding, it knocked your tax rate down a dollar, almost, you know. So I can't, I don't think that, I think affordable housing certainly, especially right now with what's going on, I mean, if you're a young couple, I mean, you're trying to buy a house, I mean, you're looking at something decent, I'm guessing $400,000, which is crazy.
You'd be lucky to get it for $400,000.
It's a bidding war, right?
In Whitman, any answer?
I know.
Because it seems like when they go for sale, boom, all of a sudden there's a bidding war going on, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Well, being, being a former police chief, you, you would probably say, do you think as we move forward statistically versus the past, the crime rate, what's going on? I mean, do you see more or less? I think I see less.
Yeah, I, I think it goes, I, you know, I think it has, it goes up and down. I mean, I always said, you know, people don't, they have no idea what really goes on. Like you see stuff in the paper, but what goes on, you know, for a small town, the police department's very active and there's a lot of cases that, you know, things that don't get reported, don't go in the paper because of just by general laws what they are as a crime, you know? And I, and I think that the police department is a, is a, is a great department. You know, I think that the chief now is doing, is doing a great job. You know, I think you're always going to have, you know, the police department has their needs, just like the fire department. I think we have a great fire department. And, you know, that's part of what brings somebody to a community. You know, who do you have? Well, you know, all the firefighters are paramedics. I mean, that's a big deal. If you have a loved one or somebody, you know, and they're, and they have a condition or something happens, you know, that's pretty reassuring to know that the people that are responding, that are immediately going to impact that, you know, whether you maybe live or die, can do those things as opposed to going to another community, just like your schools. It's the, it's the same, it's the same thing. You know, people want to know youth sports, schools, you know, public safety, seniors, you know, what do you, what do you have available for seniors? So all those things, as we're talking about budgets, again, it gets into all departments, everything. It's a package. So you, you have to make sure that everybody gets, you know, at least what they need to be able to provide services or, or carry out their duties. I think, I think it's, I think that's important, so.
CPC funding. I believe Whitman just adopted CPC recently. What's your thoughts on that? Because, and we're going to segue right from CPC into green energy to give you a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think definitely it's something that certainly, I don't know if we should have done it earlier, but I certainly think it's something that you have to, you know, as we were discussing, you have to look at all, all of the things. When you're sitting back now, like before, I dealt with a budget. It was the police budget and you sat in the room and you listened to what the other department heads and you got a clear understanding of what the employees go through, what the department needs, at least on the surface. But you were dealing with your budget. Now, if you're, if you're sitting in a seat as a selectman, you want to open that door to everything. Like if we have a way to make money or bring money in, let's look at everything and let the people make the choice. You know, and so ultimately, I guess in the end, that's, you know, that's really what you should do as a, as an elected official, it's the constituents, it's the, it's the citizens that are going to make the decision. You're just the person up there that should be advocating for them and doing what, what needs to be done.
Green, green energy seems to be kind of a hot topic in the last few years, whether it's windmills and I could be phrasing that wrong, or solar panels or, as I understand, and you know, the high school was built with solar panels on the roof. Advocate for that? Thought process, thoughts on that at all Scott?
Yeah, I think if there's a, certainly, I mean, we want to be environmentally friendly. I think that, you know, we've all heard, you know, over and over about, you know, the gases that are in the air and it's burning the ozone and we're using our resources up. And so I think anything that certainly is proactive in a sense to save our environment, you have to look at. I know the police station was the same, same way, you know, was, it was built green friendly. You know, I mean, I think pretty much all things now are at least geared that way. You know, I don't think the day and age of people, you know, a manufacturer is making things that are just, you know, not, not certainly green or environmentally friendly. I think that day and age is gone. You have to look at costs too. I mean, how much you can put into one. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, like I said, sometimes tough decisions have to be made and if it's like, you know what, we can do that, but we can't do that, then that's, you know, I think people may not like what you say, but if you're honest and upfront about it, even though they may not like it, they'll, they'll accept it. Rather than you tell them, oh yeah, we can do that. And then, and then you say, oh, well, we can't do that. Well, what do you mean? You were telling me you could do that. Now you're telling me you can't. So my, at least when I, when I was the chief, my thing was, listen, we're just going to be upfront and we're going to own it. If we did something wrong, we're going to own that. And if we can do something, we can do it. And if we can't, we're just going to say, we can't do that. You know, and, and I think it worked out pretty good. And if your decision-making is in what's in the best interest of your department or the town, or whatever department it may be, then you know you made the right decision. And, you know, at the end of the day, people are going to like it, people aren't going to like it, but you know, you know what, this was the right decision. So you can't worry about what people are going to say or think, because, you know, I think even like running for an office, at least they might like, you know, I think you just have to go in there and, and make decisions and sometimes they're going to be unpopular ones. But I have never been afraid to make a decision, you know, and, you know, you let the chips fall where they may.
Well, I like the fact you speak about owning it. When the police station in Whitman was being built, like were you involved with the building committee yourself chief? Because I, I wasn't, I, the COVID thing, I forgot that you had kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
Just missed it. But I mean, you were involved, I think, with the police chief, with the police building?
I, so I came in, yeah, in 08 and, you know, I was on the, on that committee and everything. I will say that at the time, Chief Mae Stafford put a ton of work into that building. You know, she was pretty tireless on, on making sure, you know, what things were needed and, and she deserves a lot of credit. I mean, I think that building went up because of her. And, you know, I mean, I certainly was there, but she, you know, she was the chief and she was the one they were contacting and she took that responsibility head on and, you know, there were a lot of hours, you know, that she put into it. So, you know, that was my involvement. I mean, I was there and, you know, you go through your OPM and picking your architect and doing all those things and then the overruns and then, you know, oh, we need to make this change or that change. And, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot too. I learned that. There's a lot to building, a new building, that's for sure.
It's, it's huge and it's amicable. So it appears that you can do it on the fly, budget-wise, as far as the police department was your budget.
Yep.
Is it one of the biggest employers in the town, other than the school department? And the fire department, are they hand in hand? Needs and wants, so to speak?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the police department has 26 full-time officers, probably now they might have like one or two reserve officers and the auxiliaries due to police reform and stuff, they're dwindling down because of, you know, having to, the training and all the requirements, the bridge academy and stuff. You know, if you, if you're an auxiliary officer, you have a full-time job, you can't afford to take three or four months off and try to do all this training. So, you know, through it, through, through that, they're, they're losing through that type of attrition, they're going to lose people. But yeah, the police department, fire department, obviously, your big, DPW is a big department, you know, and it can't be, it certainly can't, shouldn't be shortchanged that what the DPW does, you know, I mean, you know, people like going to the park, people like, you know, snow off the road and, you know, you get a water leak or this and that. So, you know, they're, they're vital to the town and what gets done here too. So, you know, and I think we all worked well together and the schools, obviously, you know, they, they educate our kids, they educate our children. I have a niece who is a teacher at the middle school. My youngest son is on an IEP. And, you know, at the end of the day, I remember when I was coaching up at the high school and they had the user fees in, nobody wanted kids to have to pay. We didn't pay, you didn't pay when you played sports, right? But at the end of the day, if that's what it takes, and that, and that was my point, you have to do, if you take half the food off my plate, I got to figure out what I'm going to do here. I'm either going to make do and go on a diet, or I'm going to figure out another way to get this here, right?
Very well pointed.
And like, so our son Kenny, now you know when somebody, you obviously were the chairman of the school committee, when, when, when somebody's on an ed plan and they have those needs, Kenny, we lived in Whitman, so Kenny went to Whitman schools and then he had to go to Hanson. Well, he doesn't live in Hanson. So not only was he had to go to Hanson for his ed plan, but it also changed his environment and it changed, which is upsetting. But the school said, you got two choices. You can either send him somewhere else or you can send him to Hanson. So we had to make that choice. That's the way it is. Sometimes you get, you know, tough decisions that you had to make. I mean, the school was great, he got, he got his, he got his education and they've been fantastic with him all the way through. But it still wasn't exactly what we wanted and that's what people have to be willing to, you know, you might not get exactly what you want, but you still should get the basics. You should still get the ability to educate your kids. And I think the problem comes when all of a sudden, if you say, well, you know, well, the school doesn't need, all of a sudden you are anti-school, anti-kids and, you know, well, you know, like I said, my niece is a teacher at the Whitman Middle School, my daughter Megan's over at Halifax as a teacher. I've had an aunt who was a teacher, an uncle who was a professor, it's, I taught at Quincy, Quincy College, you know, so it's not, it's not that somebody can be anti-education, it's, you know, I'm pro-everybody. Everybody needs to sit down and get a little bit of this pie, not, not one person. And so I do think that as far as sitting down in the budget process, yes, something, and I know, I don't think I'm speaking like about something new, something needs to be figured out with, with the towns and the schools to sit down and really get a grasp on what we're doing and how we can do it and be creative about it. And the only way that's going to happen is for people to get in the room and have an honest and open dialogue about this is what we need to do. So.
One last thing, because this has been a kind of quick half hour Scott, as we said, we probably could sit here for a long time. The Collins Center came in and I believe the town hired the Collins Center to come in with a five-year plan. And five-year plans are wonderful, but as we all know, planning is done with dollars and cents. What happens when you create a five-year plan? And I'm not against it. We're talking, I'm not against it whatsoever, I'm just saying you create a five-year plan and the town meeting doesn't fund it, what do you do?
Yeah. So I, so I think it's, it's like anything and I'll, and I know I'll use the police department because that's, that's what I know. So you have a plan, you have an active shoot, you have a plan, but then something goes left and that plan gets adapted. Or you, or you hear the old saying, if you want to hear God laugh, tell him your plans, right? You have to have a plan, but that plan's fluid. And especially in something like a town where budgets and, and it's run by a town meeting where the people vote, you don't know how people are going to vote. Just like when we were doing a budget, I said, I can't tell you how many storms we're going to have or how many incidents we're going to have that involve calling. It's like a fluid, here's, here's my ballpark, but I have a plan, but I'm, I might have to adapt that. And so I don't think you can set anything in stone. I do agree, you obviously have to try to forecast and, and plan for things, but you also have to certainly be cognizant of the fact that it may not go that way and you may have to adapt and go a different way. So, you know, the Collins Center to me, I wasn't a big fan of, of that whole thing, to be honest with you. But, you know, you, you do what you got to do, you know, it comes out and you're a department head and you're told this is what, okay, you know, I'm, I'm going to do my, I'm a good soldier, I'm going to take my orders and I'm going to do what I need to do. But if you were to ask me prior to, do you think, no, I, I don't, you know? And I understand the point to wanting to do it, but I, I just don't think that the town was served as well as it could have been.
Okay, well, we're down to the last couple of minutes Scott. Why, look right into the camera and tell the voters of Whitman why they should vote for Scott Benton for the Board of Selectmen.
Well, I just, you know, I think as I outlined earlier, you know, I've been here for a long time in town. I have a child in the school system. I have a niece that teaches at the schools. I, in full disclosure, I have a son who's on the fire department and a son-in-law who's on the fire department. I was on the police department. And I just think based on sitting down and doing budgets and working with department heads in different departments for over the 33-plus years I worked for the town, I think that I have a pretty good work and knowledge of, you know, the, the inner workings of the town. And I hope that, you know, if, if, if you'd like somebody, I can tell you this, I'll be honest, I'll tell you the truth and I won't back away from anything. I'm not afraid to make a difficult decision if that's what it takes or an unpopular one, so.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we hope you've enjoyed this programming of Bringing On. My name is Bob Hayes and if you want to contact me, my cell phone number is 617-538-0189. Or you can contact me at bobhayes4433@gmail.com. Thank you for watching and we will be back with another episode of Bringing On.